Welcome to the New Brunswick Board of Education meeting of December 21st. We have some new things. We have two wonderful new board members. So, Yessenia and Ivan, welcome. Welcome to the board. Good to see you. And Dorenea, who is going to be our acting DA, acting secretary of the board today. We'll be taking Rich Jarom's place. So with that, I'll read the opening announcement and then we'll do the attendance. At a republiq notice of this meeting was provided by the secretary of the board on May 10th, 2021 to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, and the clerk of the city of New Brunswick. The time and location of this meeting and all meetings of this body are posted in City Hall, 78 Bayard Street, New Brunswick. Roll call, Dorenea.
Mr. Adorno.
Here.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Ortiz.
Here.
Mrs. Seawood. Mrs. Solis.
Here.
Mr. Spencer. Mrs. Verella. Ms. Sevilla. Dr. Caldwell.
Here. Great. We have a corps. If you would rise and Dr. Johnson, please, in the flagpole. Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, the people of the United States, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Item number three, they have a presentation. No? Shout out to Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, Dr. Caldwell. In October, we acknowledged our very own Melissa Vega for being named the 2021-2022 Middlesex County Teacher of the Year by the New Jersey Department of Education. We wanted to take the opportunity to honor Ms. Vega formally during this month's board meeting. Ms. Vega has served the district for over 17 years and is the second New Brunswick Public Schools educator to earn county-level recognition in the past three years. We are very proud of Ms. Vega and this great accomplishment. Thank you, Ms. Vega, for preparing, empowering, and inspiring our students and teachers to be lifelong learners and leaders. And we will ask you to come up so we can formally present you with some flowers. Again, just to share, Ms. Vega is now the second of two New Brunswick teachers to be recognized within the past three years as County Teacher of the Year, and it emulates the hard and dedicated work that our teachers have accomplished in here in New Brunswick. Again, thank you, Ms. Vega.
So, so lucky to have so many wonderful teachers in the district. Item number four, the minutes, November 16th, 2021, monthly board meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Adorno.
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood. Mrs. Solis. Ms. Sevilla. Dr. Caldwell.
Yes. The minutes are approved. Item number five, the superintendent's report. Dr. Aubrey, may Johnson?
Yes, for the month of December, we have enrolled 9,794 students. There were eight cases of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. We had 115 suspensions. Our November staff attendance was at 94%. Our student attendance was at 91%. For the month of November, there were 19 positive cases, COVID cases, for our employees, and there were 18 positive cases for our students. I would like to start off by mentioning the terrific discussion session we had with nearly 100 parents this past Sunday. We met in this auditorium and had the opportunity to hear their concerns, answer some questions, and talk about navigating the rest of the current school year. I very much appreciated the input I received and look forward to similar sessions in the weeks to come at some of our other schools. As of now, on January 8th, I will be meeting with parents of the New Brunswick Middle School and Paul Rothen Community School. And on Saturday, January 15th, I will be meeting with parents at Lincoln, McKinley, and Woodrow Wilson Schools. From YouTube to Twitter to Instagram to Facebook to TikTok and many other platforms, these are potent communication tools. They can be extremely effective, but there are no repercussions for misuse of social media. And I strongly suggest that students, parents, and families do whatever they can to monitor how this communication technology is being utilized, more so by our young people. Like the pandemic, this is an issue not only for our schools, but for our nation and society as a whole. As I shared with the parents Saturday evening, unfortunately, the threats are something that has happened throughout the country, throughout New Jersey, and even in our county. I have spoke with many superintendent colleagues throughout the state and in our neighboring districts who are also experiencing this. However, the coverage of New Brunswick incidents has been more prevalent in the news. And I share this for two reasons. While this is not a good place to be, act. We're not the only district navigating this challenge. However, we will have low tolerance for such destructive behaviors. It's important for our students to understand that their posts, their reposts, their tweets, and action create a negative image of our students and the district that they live in. However, I believe as a community, we can collectively work together to redirect them misbehaviors and provide a community of humanity, love, and care. I'm proud of the students who are taking this negative information head-on and telling people to stop. And if you have not noticed, there's a campaign of students across the nation that are retweeting some of these negative images and posting enough is enough. I'm proud of those students. However, we need to make those posts more prevalent in our news feed. On another note, right now, one of the main things on everyone's mind is the current uptick of COVID cases. With the rise of the upper con variant, this is an issue in our schools as well as our city and across the country. We are monitoring developments very closely and are in constant contact with the New Jersey Department of Health. I will share additional details and updates as they become available, and I urge everyone who can to get vaccinated and test frequently. Clearly, between the concerns related to the pandemic and several other unwanted distractions, the past several weeks have been challenging. But our school district is working to address these issues, and we are also interacting closely with the New Brunswick Police Department. One thing I do know for sure, we are facing our difficulties head-on, and New Brunswick Public Schools are a safe place for our children to attend classes and learn. On a lighter note, this weekend, through a partnership with the New Jersey Black Women Physician Association, we were able to host a very successful vaccination clinic on Saturday, December 18th. We were able to administer a total of 281 doses, second doses, and boosters to students, parents, and staff. Lastly, the district held a virtual job fair on Wednesday, December 15th, with over 40 applicants for all district positions, including teachers, paraprofessionals, food service, and custodial staff. The district plans to continue to host virtual job fairs, and please be on the lookout for more information via our district's social media platforms, Twitter, Token Point, Facebook, and our district website. That concludes my report. Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's report? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Dorenea.
Mr. Adorno. Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood. Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla. Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Excellent. Item number six, the student representative report. Ms. Ashley Caldwell.
Hello, my name is Ashley Caldwell, and I will be presenting the student representative report. On December 4th, many students turned out for the SAT exam with COVID-19 protocols set in place at the high school campus. The week of December 13th, many students took advantage of the candygram sale held in the cafeteria by sending friends positive messages throughout the school. On December 15th and 16th, student pictures were taken, which will be used for upcoming student IDs. In the meantime, students have been provided with temporary IDs that are used at different locations within the school. On December 20th, students were recognized and treated to light refreshments during the marking period one honor roll celebration. Hundreds of students were recognized through honor roll, vice principal honor roll, and principal honor roll standing. On December 21st, staff versus students volleyball game took place today and will continue tomorrow. For fall and winter sports, two athletes have signed their letter of intent to continue their education in athletics in college. Salma Ibrahim Mohammed to St. Elizabeth University for soccer, and Amira Alfred to Wilkes University for football. All sports kicked off on December 17th with highlights from the weekend of Joshua Nazario having the best shot put throw at the zebra throwing classic, Brian D. Garcia winning his first wrestling tournament of the year at 285-pound weight class, and reigning state champion Curly Borbor winning her first tournament at 185-pound weight class. This includes my student representative report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley Caldwell. The facilities committee report. Mr. Ortiz, you do.
The facilities committee met on December 15th, 2021. The Blanquito Valenti Community School project update, DMR architects, has reached completed the construction documents for owner final review. We are currently reviewing the completed set related to finishes, construction materials, and details, and evaluating documents against the GMP proposal provided by Epic Construction. The final educational approval was received from the Department of Education on August 18th, 2021. As of October 19th, NJDA, NJDCA build review approvals have been released for structural steel and underslab plumbing work, fire protection, site and civil footings and foundations, and the grease traps. Elevator plan review release was received on 8/16/2021, and partial electrical underground plan review was received on 9/7/2021. Treatment work approval, August 11th, 2021. Water main extension permit, August 20, 2021. Storm water management plan review conditional approval, August 20, 2021. Double wear raring, raring canal commission approval, September 15th, 2021. Full site soil erosion and sediment control plan approval, September 20, 2021. All preconstruction remedial actions have been completed. The underground tanks have been removed, the holes have been properly filled, and the job trailers have been delivered to the site. Site demolition, clearing, and excavation of both detention basins and grading slash building pad preparations have started and are scheduled to continue through the end of this month. Atlantic Engineering, the company providing special testing and inspections, has been on-site for inspections and testing services related to the stormwater basin excavation and grading slash building pad preparations. Escavation work for footings, foundations, formwork, including including a rebar and concrete is currently scheduled to begin at the end of this month, followed by site work utilities, underslab utilities, and slab on grade. The summer structural steel erection has been pushed out April of 2022. Completion of the school is still scheduled for August of 2023. And that is my report.
Very exciting. We're making a lot of progress on the school. That's, I said, thank you for that very, very thorough, thorough report. Very, very, very excited about that. We now have the athletic committee report. And Ivan?
Athletic committee met on December 20th. The winter season is in, is up and running, is full swing. Trialts took place on 11/22 and 11/23 for boys and girls basketball. All other sports started on 11/29. We currently have 152 participating at the high school and 45 at the middle school. Out of the 152 high school athletes, 134 are above the required 2.0 GPA or 88.2%. The remaining 18 have appealed to the eligibility committee and are allowed to participate at a limited basis based on their current grades and discipline standings in the high school. Out of the 152 high school students, 122 are vaccinated, and 22 of 45 at the middle school are vaccinated. All unvaccinated athletes are being tested on a weekly basis to ensure the safety of all student athletes. All protocols and precautions are being taken to help our student athletes have a cool and successful winter sports season. We are limiting all basketball games to two family members per athlete, not including students. New Brunswick students will sit in the student section. All other spectators will sit socially distant with masks on at all times. On 12/18, we hosted our first zebra shot put meet at the high school, where track teams sent their best throwers to compete. In New Brunswick's home, Joshua Nazario had the best throw of the day at 40 feet, 10 inches. There will be two more of these events on 12/28 and 1/22. And to reiterate what this Caldwell spoke about, this past weekend, Brian Garcia did win the 285 wrestling tournament weighing in at only 225 pounds. And also Curly Borbor, the reigning state champion, continued her successful winning first tournament and at 185 pounds. All schedules can be found at greatermiddlesexconference.org and highlights found on our Instagram page, New Brunswick Zebra's. And that is my report.
Ivan, Mr. Adorno, great report. Thank you very much. Yeah, right. Yeah, I was about to do that. I just wanted to say too, it's just great to see how many scholar athletes we have. So, very, very proud of that. We have the athletic report. Is there a motion to accept the athletic report? Second?
Second.
Dorenea, roll call, please.
Mr. Adorno.
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz. Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla. Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay. Item number nine on your agenda, the curriculum policy committee report. December 11th.
Mr. President, Lord, Curriculum Policy Committee. We had two presentations. The first was a revision of the Introduction to Business course. It's now recommended that we change the name to Introduction to Finance, and the curriculum has been revised. It introduces students to the basic principles of finance, makes them aware of possible career tracks. These principles are the basic knowledge for either a career in corporate finance or further education in the area of investments, real estate, banking, and/or insurance. I was particularly excited about this change in this course because in addition, it presents the opportunity for possible dual credit with the county college. And as you know, that's one of my pet peeves. The second presentation was by Dr. Andrea Fontanés, and she presented on a new resource that we approved in September for purchase. So, we got feedback on these two series that are utilized in the bilingual and dual-language programs. And it's our understanding that staff has really benefited from these additional resources, and in that regard, the students and parents have benefited. The first is Imagine Espanol, a personalized learning solution that accelerates grade-level reading and language proficiency in Spanish for students in grades K through 2. It teaches phonics skills and foundational literacy skills in Spanish. The second program series is Imagine Lectura. Helps students in grades 3 through 5 build comprehension of authentic Spanish text and provides grade-level instructional tasks in Spanish. And it's our understanding, these two additions to curriculum, the resources has been quite effective. And as I said, the teachers are really benefiting and pleased with these resources. We also received updates. The Middlesex County Office of Education conducted the second interim review of the district's progress in the area of instruction and programming. The district's interim placement results for November 2021 is 76%. We will continue to implement the district improvement plan to address areas in need of improvement for instruction and programming. I think we reported out on this last month that we would have the second review with the county. And so that was the result, and I think there was only a 1% change. November 21st, students participated in the 5K run with girls on the run of Central Jersey. I think you saw the press coverage on that. The program encourages student perseverance and goal setting. December 8th, New Brunswick High School staff began implementing mindfulness practices in our classrooms to develop emotional intelligence, self-awareness, and self-control. Resources were provided to the students to continue with these exercises at home as well. And we will be offering additional professional development to staff for use. Hopefully, we can increase our use of this technique to benefit the students and the parents. On December 15th, Parent University held a session led by Dr. Brode and Dr. Assabado titled Doctor Talk Part Two. And I believe these two have presented to our parents before, where parents were given the opportunity to learn more about the latest information regarding the COVID virus and vaccinations for children age 5 and up, as well as engage in interactive question and answer to address any concerns and uncertainties. And this again was with our parent university. The following day, a session was led by Dr. Delgado, who's our science specialist, and Elizabeth Nunez, who's our science supervisor, where parents engaged in classroom-home connections, and resources were provided to support learning at home. The focus was to show how families bring valuable knowledge and skills to our community of learners, as well as how science learning is deeply connected to culture, identity, and power. We reviewed all resolutions presented or requested through the curriculum and instruction department, and we referred them to full board for approval on the consent agenda. During the policy portion of our meeting, five policies, four regulations were revised and are being referred for approval. And just to give a quick synopsis of the policies. The Every Student Succeeds Act complaints were revised to include updated provisions of the complaint procedure to be in compliance with the Every Student Succeeds Act. And this is more in regards to a language because as you know, the terminology has changed. Now it's called Ever Student Succeeds Act. The next policy we looked at was Comprehensive Health and Physical Education. Was revised to include six new statutes that address issues related to the health and well-being of students that must be included in the district's curriculum as required by the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for infill limitation and CUSAC monitoring beginning next year. But hopefully, we can complete that work and get that done sooner than that. Policies and regulations aligned to the evaluation of teaching staff members, excluding teachers and administrators. This policy, 3222, administrator-excluded principles and vice principles and evaluation of principles were in vice principles. 3224, were revised to require evaluation rubrics to be submitted to the Commission of Education by August 1st every year for approval by August 15th. We did read these, and we're recommending to the board that we adopt these because they're mandated. So, we request that they are adopted on the first reading. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Seawood, for that very, very thorough report. Appreciate it. Lot of stuff going on. Item number 10, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey. You know, I'm pleased to report that, as some of you may know, the ESCNJ serves all 21 counties and is really the largest program providing comprehensive services for special needs students. There are a lot of private providers who are much more expensive, and many of them aren't as good. And so, we actually have the highest number of students ever in the history of the commission, largely because the services have been comprehensive. largely because the services have been comprehensive. And so we're helping many, many more students. Also, I wanted, I don't think I reported it last time, that we had a presentation from a gentleman by the name of Brian Taylor. Brian Taylor was an All-American basketball player at Princeton. He played for the champion New York Nets, Dr. Jay. He grew up in Perth Amboy. I heard he scored 85 points against New Brunswick when he was here. But what he's doing is, with the commission, is looking at developing college programs for students of color at Ivy League institutions to really help them acclimate, to really help them prepare, and to help them to supplement some of the great things we're doing in the district. So you'll hear more about that, and we'll give an opportunity for students. And starting out with Ivy League, but really expanding to other competitive colleges. So that's an exciting opportunity that could really help many of our students. And with that, that's the report. I'd like to move to item number 12, public comments. And Dorenea, do we have, I understand we have nine people that have signed up?
Yes, Mr. President. We have nine members of the public that have signed up to speak tonight. First on the list, we have Yolanda Hernandez.
Welcome, if you would come to the podium. It's hard to see with these lights going from up around me. If you could state your name and address?
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Yolanda Hernandez. Mi dirección es 16 La Times Street in New Brunswick. Quiero decir a todos los presentes, estoy sumamente ofendida por la reunión del 17 de diciembre. No me permitieron entrar a la escuela con la excusa de que no teno hijos en esta escuela. So my name is Yolanda Hernandez. Leading everyone, I would like to say that I am very offended because I was not allowed to come into the building with an excuse that I do not have children in this school. Pero me dejo tristeza que otras madres que tampoco tienen hijos en esta escuela sí las dejaron entrar. And it saddens me to find out that there were other parents who also did not have children in the school, but who were allowed to come in. Le rogué a la gente de seguridad, por favor, regímenme entrar, y su respuesta fue, no, retírese. I begged the person, the security person, to allow me to come in, but his answer was to leave the premises. Quiero ver mi opinión respecto a esta situación de violencia. Por favor, revisen el trabajo de la administración de esta escuela. I would like to revisit the work that the administration is doing in this school and to revise that work. Todo lo que pasa dentro de esta escuela es responsabilidad de la administración. Everything that happens in this school is the school's responsibility. The administration is responsible. Exhorto al señor principal que haga su trabajo como responde. I asked the principal of this school that he does his job accordingly. El personal que asiste a esta escuela es su responsabilidad y su imagen de trabajo. And the staff that also works in this school is their responsibility and also the image of who present at the end of their work. Señor intendente, siempre dice que los padres son bienvenidos, pero lo que veo es otra cosa. Mr. Superintendent, you always say that all parents are welcome in the district, but what I can see is the opposite. Nos cortan el tiempo para hablar. No imprimen la gente en español o en nuestro idioma. You've had the time allowed to speak, and also the agenda is not included in Spanish. Nos ponen obstáculos para participar en comentarios públicos, y la lista continúa. And we find obstacles to be able to participate during the public session. Testimonios de estudiantes en su momento tomarán un lugar en esta historia. And students' testimonies will take place at some point in this story. El alcohol, las drogas, el bullying, la falta de respeto a los maestros y trabajadores de las escuelas.
Thank you for the commentary. Translate the last one.
Yes, so it said the alcohol, drugs, and bullying, and also lack of respect to the teachers and staff in this school. Put it in. Son cosas que no podemos tapar con un mensaje mentiroso. Todo está bien. And there are things that we cannot cover under this page, and that everything is okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your comment, for coming up.
And is possible I can make a comment with Mr. Johnson, please? I can send a message or email to your assistant?
Please do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dorenea, who's next?
Next on the list, we have Mr. Charlie Cradville.
Charlie Cradville, if you could state your name and address, please?
Good evening, members of the board. Charles Cradville, from New Brunswick, the editor of New Brunswick Today, community newspaper, available online at newbrunswicktoday.com. Did I hear correctly? Mr. Jannero is leaving his position?
No, you didn't.
Okay. You mentioned there's going to be an acting administrator. Is that correct, an acting BA?
No, Dorenea is looking to get her certification. This is one of the things she has to do to get her certification. So Rich is here evaluating her, making sure she does a good job.
Okay, so there's no personnel changes taking place?
No personnel changes.
Just someone filling in the role tonight?
No, just throughout the district. We take pride in growing our students, growing our administrators so that they can be the best they can be.
Students for life, great.
Students as well.
So November 24th, there was a huge fight right here at New Brunswick High School. I almost immediately reached out to the superintendent to try to get some information at 12:20 PM. Reached out again later in the evening that night. I know Thanksgiving was the next day, so waited a couple of days, reached out again. Never got any response at all from the superintendent. So what does the superintendent have to say about the huge fight the day before Thanksgiving here?
There's no comment, no comment on that. The authorities were in constant contact with the authorities who had investigated and did a great job in identifying some of the perpetrators and the challenges. No comment tonight.
Okay, and is it true that a student from another school made their way into the facility and they were charged?
Absolutely not.
No?
Absolutely not. And there was some false reporting as well that someone was arrested who was related to this, and that was very wrong and very misleading and caused a lot of chaos with parents and others. So we would encourage that the reporting would be accurate.
So no one was charged with defying trust casting?
No, not at the time.
Really? The police have said otherwise. I'll be gone because I have a limited amount of time. And shame on you for making it harder to speak at these meetings and cutting the amount of time each person gets to address you. But I need to know about Resolution AH. What services will the McCoy Group be providing for the sum of $43,000? And is this the same McCoy that used to be an assistant superintendent? I believe Mr. Vaughn McCoy made a political donation to New Beginnings for New Brunswick Schools when you were running to support you, $598 on April 23rd, 2020. Why are we bringing the McCoys back in and paying them $43,000? What for?
Dr. Dawson will tell you what services.
Ms. McCoy is being brought back to assist myself in terms of scoping out the new five-year strategic plan for the district. Also, she'll be doing about five coaching sessions with our vice principal.
Okay, well, thank you. I'll follow up about that day before Thanksgiving because it does seem that what you're saying tonight is in conflict with the statement the police put out. So I'll email you, Chairman. But wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Halloween.
Happy holidays, thank you for your comments. Who's number three?
Number three, we have Irma Rodriguez.
This is Rodriguez. If you could come up and state your name and address? Are you here? They may not be here, so why don't we move to the next?
Next on the list, we have Eric Coto.
Eric Coto, are you here? Eric, I don't see Eric coming, so let's move to the next one.
Next on the list, we have Danielle Moore.
Danielle. Let's see her here. If you could say your name and address?
Danielle Moore, Summer St. Street. I have to say.
Good evening.
Good. I have nothing to say to you due to where I still feel offended by Dr. Johnson, Dr. Caldwell, head of security, and the security guard. Sure, I came to the meeting on Saturday, but wow, once I saw their face again, it hurt, but like I said, due to where the way you disrespected me, due to where telling me that I had to be removed, came at me because I'm not able to sit down due to where I have disabled back. But like I said, I'm not going to let it keep me who do what, who might cross up above, shows me what's the best thing to do. But I will say, the four of you, you will feel the pain, you will suffer, you will regret disrespecting me. Like I said, it's hard for me to stand here. Like I said, you're not giving another procedure. But like I said, you will regret disrespecting me because I can't sit in those chairs. And I will say, due to where, with this head of security, due to where you do not have the right security guards, excuse me, I'm not going to say the right security guard, but don't have the right amount of security guards to handle 2,100 kids here due to where past, if you go on Instagram, YouTube, you will see for over for the past six to eight weeks, there has been almost a fight-related video in New Brunswick High School every day. So can you really take this to other, or to other schools? No, honestly, I will speak what I feel due to where that was just a color New Brunswick because it started in New Brunswick, and then you had a new copy of that to make it clear to New Brunswick, but wow, you all investigate what I said, the crime in New Brunswick and the crimes of fights that have been going in New Brunswick that you've been hiding and lying to the past. Oh, you want to reshape yourself due to where this is Luca. Wow, due to where she has some husband that works for Queens Park and Howard. Oh, too much connection, but they're lying. So I will, the parents say that, wow, on November 24th, and I say every message due to where you stated that, wow, nothing happened until those videos of me met to show the big fight and blood on November 24th. Then you send out a text message at 5:07, six hours later, to say, yes, it was an incident. And I wanted, I got a street class and due to where I think it's time after Christmas break that you go to two or four weeks of recess. Too many COVID-19 cases. I think the vaccines are not working. People are saying, wow, you've been vaccinated. You don't have to wear a mask, but you're still getting COVID-19. Well, you've been vaccinated or not. Everybody's body is different. But I think after Christmas break, it's going to be worse than it was last Thanksgiving break due to where it still have to be a little virtual learning. I know it's not good virtual learning, but it's always better to be safe and sorry, even though I know two of you don't believe in safety at all. But like I said, one day I hope you will.
Thank you very much for your comments. Have a good evening. Dorenea, who's next?
Next, we have Linda Stork.
Linda Stork. Linda Stork, are you here? There's Linda. Say your name and address, please.
Linda Stork, Dr. Caldwell. Good evening. I would like to echo the concerns about the surge in the use of coronavirus cases which anecdotally appeared coming and would be surprising if it weren't because everywhere else they are also. But within the schools, it's, you know, surge again is projected to surge through the beginning of January. So is there a plan at least to get negative tests before people come back together?
Yes.
Yes, we are developing plans at this moment. As of today, we're requesting all staff members to be tested on January 5th. And from that, we will be able to detect any type of COVID cases. So we are asking all staff to be tested. There are some exceptions as well. If any staff member actually have received the virus within three weeks, they don't need to be tested. And unvaccinated employees, we have a testing program just for them. So yes, we are looking at those measures and thinking of some other things just in case the spike is substantial.
Okay, well, we pretty much know that it will be. If people are tested by the 5th, are they not reporting back on the 3rd?
Yes, they are reporting back on the 3rd, but we wanted to count four to five days out when we know the virus actually takes form in the body with the understanding that many people will be partying on New Year's Eve. So we counted five days out to make sure we get a more accurate reading.
But in the meantime, all the people who later turn out positive are all here.
Exactly, yeah, it's a possibility. It's something we're going to have to adjust to. It surrounds us all.
Yes, it's not possible. It's a local habit. If you don't have consults, people are going to pull back together. Um, we should be to Danielle's idea of having one. There's more, I suggested probably some virtual learning just to make sure everybody's good to come back together. I'm concerned about the 150 suspension. I was concerned last time with 90 some. That seems like a lot. Has in-school suspension been started again?
Yes, the American school suspension.
So do these 150 students stay in school?
No, not all of them.
So are there probably most of them, almost all of them?
I don't have the numbers in hand right now, but offenses that require outer-school suspension, I would want to believe in this report the majority are outer-school suspensions.
So that is the more serious offenses?
Not in specific student suspensions, but suspensions range from fights to excessive class cutting to any type of inappropriate substances brought into the school building. So those require outer-school suspensions.
Okay, but so what, and some of it is no intervention?
Of course, we always have provided intervention for students and council is going to come back. Thank you, thank you very much for your time. You've been over for about 40 seconds, so appreciate it. Thank you very much. Who's next?
Erica Cordones.
Welcome, please state your name and address.
My name is Erica Cordones.
Could we, if you would, could you speak up? And could we turn up the mic as well? Because it is hard to hear.
Mi nombre es Erica Cordones. Vivo in Angeles Street. Como padre, como madre de mi hija, me siento preocupada por la seguridad de nuestros hijos. No es justo que nuestros hijos estén con miedo en la escuela porque eso es lo que está pasando. Recibir una llamada de mi hija asustada. Ella es una niña que está en su año final de la escuela. Y escucharla hablar y decirme, mami, tengo miedo. En ese momento, se pidió, el corazón se partió porque no es justo para ellos. A mi parecer, creo que deberían tener un poco más de... ser más fuertes en lo que es la disciplina de los estudiantes. Al principio, cuando comenzaron los problemas, pregunté a mi hija cuánto era la cantidad de suspensión que me daba un estudiante que tenía una pérdida en la escuela. Lo que me supo decir de un día a dos, yo creo que eso no es suficiente. Yo creo que debería de ser una disciplina mucho más rigurosa para esos estudiantes.
If you could translate.
So she's concerned about the safety of students at the school. She feels that it's not fair for children to be afraid in school during... that it's not fair for children to be afraid in school during, uh, one time she received a call from her daughter who said that, uh, she was scared because of what was happening at school. And it broke her heart here when she, uh, said, as she was speaking on the phone. And, uh, she would like to request that there's a more rigorous discipline, discipline consequences for the students, that sometimes suspension of one or two days is not enough. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming and speaking and sharing. Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much. Doreen?
Next, uh, we have Crystal Martinez Barrientos.
Crystal Martinez Barrientos.
Crystal Martinez Barrientos.
Are you here? I believe she's here. Is there someone else?
Yes. Uh, last on the list we have Carolina Hernandez.
Welcome. Could you name? If you approach the mic, give us your name and address, please.
Sí. Ah, bueno, solo quiero decir, no entiendo por qué. Okay. Mi nombre es Carolina Hernandez y vivo en Adria's Metany. Estoy un poco en desacuerdo, más yo estoy en desacuerdo porque han quitado cinco minutos para que los, los padres nos podamos expresar. Pienso que es nada. Para nosotros tenemos que estar prácticamente corriendo para hablar y decir lo que queremos decir. Cuando hay muchas cosas que nosotros los padres queremos hablar e traer ahorita a la junta directiva y ustedes nos están cortando el tiempo. Y quisiera comentar por la seguridad. El sábado hablamos sobre la seguridad, señora intendente, y hoy al entrar a la, a la escuela me di cuenta que no han hecho trabajo porque no pidieron ahí ni si no estaba la suficiente seguridad en entrada. Así que no sé qué está pasando porque usted dijo que iba a trabajar en eso. Otra cosa que quiero, eh, preguntar, ¿qué están haciendo? Ustedes dijo que está haciendo exámenes en la tierra para la construcción del inco nanas. Quisiera que usted me pudiera compartir cómo salieron esos exámenes de la tierra porque sabemos que por ahí esa área está muy contaminada. Otra cosa también que quiero compartir y más yo preguntar, en las escuelas, cuando un niño sale positivo al personal, ¿qué están haciendo ustedes para mantenerse la seguridad de todos los demás estudiantes? Ya que les voy a compartir que mi hijo estuvo cerca de alguien que salió positivo y me mandaron a mi hijo a cuarentena. Son dos niños, uno de ellos lo mandaron y al otro no. Entonces, eh, no entiendo por qué están tomando esta seguridad en cuestión de salud, pero no están haciendo todo el trabajo porque mis dos hijos conviven todo el tiempo con nosotros. Los otros niños van a sus escuelas y pueden llevar el virus, ¿no? Y, y la pregunta es más que nada, ¿por qué no tienen exámenes de, de COVID para hacerles en ese momento en que los niños salen, eh, positivos y puedan ustedes hacerles la prueba a los demás niños? Quisiera hablar un poco de, de también de la seguridad. Uh, usted dijo que, eh, la gente tiene mala, mala, ¿cómo se puede decir? Ven a esta escuela como con una mala, tiene mala fama, el distrito, y le voy a decir por qué. No somos cualquier persona de la comunidad que piensa que esta escuela es bastante insegura. Son los niños de la propia escuela, son los padres que piensan que esta escuela es verdaderamente insegura. Así que vamos a ser claros en eso y no vamos a decir que es cualquier persona la que piensa que esta escuela no tiene la suficiente seguridad, no tiene la suficientemente, eh, consejeros para ayudar a nuestros hijos para que están pasando los problemas.
Thank you very much for the translation.
Sí, y solo quiero recalcar que queremos que nos devuelvan cinco minutos porque estamos corriendo este sábado y esto no debe de ser así. Gracias.
So her name is Carolina Hernandez. Uh, she would like to request that the five minutes are back because she feels that she has to rush to give her comments. She's feeling that there's, that there is not enough, uh, time to, um, speak and share what the parents want to say to the board. She, uh, also wants to say that she feels that there is still not enough safety or security when she comes into the school. She realized that today, as a matter of fact, when she came into the school, there was no security and nobody requested her ID. Uh, she wants to, uh, remind the board that it was said that it was going to be, um, requesting, uh, security and also against as soon as people who come into the school. In addition, uh, she wants to mention that, um, that it was mentioned, uh, the soil tests. So she wants to know what are those results about the, uh, testing of the soil in the Lincoln area. Um, she also stated that she would like to have, um, to know what's happening in the schools and what the schools are doing when children test positive, uh, COVID positive. And, um, because her son was, she has two children, one son was sent to, uh, beyond quarantine where the other student was not sent to, uh, quarantine. And, uh, and she knows that the students can't carry the virus. She would like to recommend that there is a COVID test on site. So as soon as the students are identified, being possible close contact, to be tested as soon as possible. She finally wanted to say that, um, there is a bad reputation at the school because there is very unsafe and parents feel that way. And, um, and they are not going to say it's not, not true. There is, uh, there's, there's not safety. And she would like to also request, uh, more counselors. Quisiera que se vaya a responder alguna de las preguntas. And if you wish, possibly she has some answers to her questions.
Uh, thank you very much.
Si estoy aquí es para que ustedes me escuchen, pero también quiero tener respuesta, no nada más de ir a hablar y que no tenga respuesta.
Doreen, do we have anyone else?
Next we have Candido Osorio Rojas.
Rojas? Candido Osorio Rojas?
Uh, hi, my name is Candido and I'm gonna try to speak English because at the time I mean, obviously you are already stealing my time. Uh, and, and the first, I mean, I'm dealing in a business, I'm ten, ten minutes straight. And first I want to ask a question about the time. I mean, uh, last weekend, Mr. Johnson was saying you really wanted to talk to the parents, but what I really see is you chose one separate mouth from the parents, no communication. Because I remember three years, like two years ago, the sheet was on the table, everybody can sign out to speak. Then after that, you guys taking the sheet, so many people can sign, and then you guys calling for sending mail to Mr. Richard. Then now, you guys taking the time, been into, to be five minutes, you taking to three minutes. So this is the way how Mr. Johnson really think, uh, we can have conversation together. Because to be honest, I'm a gentleman. And what is really made me upset, there is no answer still from you, from you. Everybody questioning. And the only thing, what I see, the security here, if we overpassing the time, that we're gonna, we're gonna be able to take out from here. Now, this is the kind of security what we need for our kids. Now for the parents, when they come in, it's so hard to understand our great community and these kids. If you guys really don't know what to do, you have to resign. You are not belong at this building. I'm here because I really concern about the safety of my kids. Not only the high school and the, and the elementary, elementary school, middle school, but it looks like you guys really don't wanna do nothing. If you guys really, they're choosing there, they're taking the money from the city, then you guys are not belong at this building. Not, you guys are not belong to be teachers and, uh, superintendent, lawyers, and whatever you guys doing here. We need people who really wanna teach our kids and care about our kids.
Who's next?
Last we have Suli Marine Martinez.
Suli Martinez. Suli, are you here?
Yeah, she's coming.
Hello, welcome. Please state your name and address.
Mi nombre es Suli Marine Martinez y vivo en la 140,000, en Kenwood, New York. Bueno, más que nada, yo no vengo a poner mis oposiciones aquí porque yo no tengo niños aún en high school. Si tengo in middle school, uh, I actually piden ID, piden, pues requieren identificación para identificarnos, más que nada por la mayor seguridad de los niños o de ustedes como maestros. Uh, yo no voy a poner a cuestionar si enseñan o no enseñan bien a los niños. Yo creo que la educación es pertenece a nosotros como padres educar a nuestros hijos y ustedes enseñarles, pero con ayuda de las dos partes. Y también una sugerencia, si quieren tomarla, de poner un policía dentro de la escuela para también tener una seguridad aquí dentro porque, pues ya necesitan más seguridad aparte de tener identificación, si es que no lo están haciendo. Eh, pues todo lo relacionado que ya antes dijeron los padres, pues yo quisiera dar mi punto de vista porque, pues, mi hijo está por entrar y yo también quiero una seguridad para él también porque aparte de queremos que ellos aprendan, queremos que ustedes o ellos estén seguros y también de que no cualquier niño venga a ponerles otras ideas a otros niños que vienen bien educados. Porque el que más se siente superior a ellos viene pisotear a otros niños con el simple hecho de que se sientan más superiores que ellos. Mi niño pasó por un incidente en mi school. Uh, un compañero de octavo grado le rompió el teléfono a él y con una fan le dijo que romper el teléfono a él no era nada, que él de él estaba malo y que en unos dos días se sale le comprarle a modo. Entonces yo digo que eso no está bien porque los padres si hacen algo, los apremen a los hijos. Y en otra parte, todos niños los siguieron a tortearlo en un, en un baño que casi le rompieron la nariz. Uno como padre siente impotente porque si los ituris no hacen su chequeo, son hacen sus rondas en los baños o en la escuela, los niños tampoco están seguros ni con los mismos estudiantes ni en la misma escuela. Para mí es muy importante que los padres también les enseñen a sus hijos a respetar a otros hijos y a ustedes como maestros.
Thank you very much. We'd like to hear your translation.
Her name is Suli Marine Martinez. Uh, she says that she doesn't have children here at, at the high school, but she has children at the middle school. At the middle school, they ask for ID and they check for the safety of the children. Uh, she's not questioning the education because she feels that the parents have the, um, the obligation to educate children at home as the school has the obligation to teach children at school. She has a suggestion. She would like to have a police officer in the school and have the, uh, police officers and the security ask for ID because they are not requesting it. She would like to give her opinion also because, um, her child is going to start soon high school and this concerns her that she's going to come, the students going to come to a safe place and not be afraid about the children. Because there are other children who bully the students or intimidate them to feel superior. Uh, she had an incident at the middle school where a student broke her son's phone and, um, it was not, nothing was done about it. And the student, um, told the son, her son, that it was not a big deal because the parents were going to replace it in two days and that's not okay. She also said that another time, the student was followed to the bathroom and, um, somebody almost broke his nose. She would like to request the safety of the school once again and that the security will be monitoring the hallways. And so they are present in order to ensure the safety of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. Do we have, Doreen, do we have anyone else?
We have no other speakers on the list, Mr. President.
No additional speakers. Thank you. Uh, thank you very much. So I wanted to say a few things in my president's report. First, I want to, I appreciate everyone that's come to the mic, um, whether they have attacked us personally or otherwise, we appreciate your opinion. This is the United States and so we, uh, we encourage you to speak. However, there are a few things that it's important for, uh, for everyone to, to understand. And so, um, one, the Board of Education is a policy board. So if you have concerns or questions and the first time they're coming up, you're coming to the board, it's not the board's responsibility to manage the day-to-day. We hire the superintendent, we work with the superintendent, so that the superintendent hires the staff. So one of the reasons that we, i- i- it's important for you to put in an email or writing in Spanish or English, any concerns that you have. So when you come to here, it's important that this isn't the first time we're hearing of your concerns. If something happens in the middle school, it's important and incumbent upon you to go to the, to the principal of that school. If the principal does not resolve that, then you go to the superintendent. If the superintendent doesn't resolve that, then you come here and, and so. But so you can come and yell and scream and do this and all that, but if we, 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 that's the first we're hearing it, it's gonna take a while to respond. So, so part of this, this is not a public forum just to come in and complain and expect your complaints to be heard. So that's important. We want to solve those problems, but we can't solve those problems if we don't have them in writing. We don't understand the details around those problems. We don't understand how we can work on those problems. So that, that's important. The next thing that is very, very important is that, uh, to understand that there are all sorts of rumors going around. You know, I have a daughter in the school, I have a good sense of what's going on in the school. I understand that many students are scared. I understand that many parents are scared. But I happen to do a lot of work with school districts throughout New Jersey and throughout the country. And New Brunswick is one of the safest schools in the country. Well, why? Because someone said, well, we need to have the police in the school. Well, guess what? We have the police in the school every single day. And I've had a chance to talk to the police about the incidents and the incidents and some of the threats that had happened. Talking to the police, we've involved the FBI, the Federal Bureau of Investigation, has looked at some of these complaints. There are probably 5% of the schools that have a police department in the school. We're one of the few. So we're safer than almost all the districts in Middlesex County. So understand that a threat, and then we have some, some irresponsible reporting that gets on there and says that so-and-so was arrested in the school and, and on social media. But we also, it's, it's a responsibility of, of the, the police, our security guards, our teachers, but also our families and parents. We have to work together. It's not us against you or you against us or, or them. That we need to do a better job collectively of managing social media. We need to know what our students are doing on social media. If we do not know if our students are on Instagram, if they're on Facebook, if they're on, on, on any of the other Snapchat or any of the other things, we as parents and as the community need to understand that. Because what happens is a lot of these threats are veiled threats, but they scare folks. And there is bullying that goes on in every school district in New Jersey. And that is our number one priority to make sure that every child is safe from other children. So understand, we take this very seriously. That's why we have police in the school. That's why we have security guards. We're currently looking at the counselors. Maybe we need more counselors. But understand, every single day, we're trying to figure out how we can make it better for, for kids. And it's irresponsible because so many people are out there spreading rumors. It's easy to say that something is happening when it's not. And as I'm looking at social media and I'm hearing all sorts of reporting and comments, and, and, and what we need to understand is that there's certain people who understand how to scare people. There's certain students that I know firsthand who try to, who do these threats to, to scare people. So we as a community are in this together. We have to work as a team. It doesn't do any good to- It doesn't do any good to accuse this person of that or that person of doing this. That is kind of the separation that strengthens and makes, makes people more fearful. So I want to say that, that we want to solve your problems. Send it in writing before the board meeting so that we can try to address it. And when you come up here and make a complaint, we can, we can say, "Well, this is what actually happened." So please understand that we want to hear your concerns, we want to do something about it, but if it's the first time we hear it here, it's a waste of time unless you follow it up with writing. So any of those concerns that you're concerned about, please make sure you write them, get them to the superintendent's office and he will get back to you or someone from our administration will get back to you. So I want to thank you for coming out. I hope you come out, but this isn't the place we're gonna solve problems. This is the place where we can actually give you answers if we know in advance. So thank you, thank you very, very much.
Sir, I emailed three times. The superintendent didn't respond to my email. When is the superintendent gonna respond to my email?
That's the kind of rude behavior that's unacceptable. We gave people a chance to speak.
You just told me to email my concerns. I did three times.
Consent agenda, item number 13. Is there a motion? This is, this is exactly what I'm talking about. The people who are spreading fear are out there yelling and screaming. Let's work on this together. We care about kids. This is about education. Let's be a team. Item number 13. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Adorno.
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
The Finance Committee, report, Ms. Diana Solis.
Thank you, Dr. Caldwell. The Finance Committee met this evening, reviewed all items, and I'd like to request a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Roll call, Drennan.
Mr. Adorno.
Yes, but I'm staying on pages six and seven.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes, but I'm staying on page 23.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
23?
28.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you very much. Item number 15. I'll read the resolution for closed session. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 10:4 to 6 provides that certain matters of the public body may be discussed in closed session and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, personnel matters, matters of attorney, client privilege, now therefore being resolved that the aforementioned subjects shall be discussed in closed session by this Board of Education and administrative staff and the minutes of said closed session discussion will be made available to the public when the reasons for the nondisclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act no longer exists. Is there a motion to go to closed session? Is there a second? Roll call, Drennan.
Mr. Adorno.
Yes.
Mrs. Medina Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla. Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
We are in closed session. Thank you.
Again, Karen, you are being lied to again with him saying that the child was not arrested by Captain J.C. Miller and Captain, who brought a couple down, a sweet, sweet story, that's right on the line, is saying that...